The school board work session begins in two minutes. Please take your seats. Again, the school board work session begins in two minutes.
Good morning. I now call the March 29th, 2022 administrative briefing and work session of the Marion County School Board to order at 9:00 a.m. Please silence your electronic devices and remove hats to avoid disturbing others. I will now ask the school board to turn and explain the rules for this work session.
This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the rights for citizens to participate. The board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form located in the lobby and hand it to the school board clerk. After the board and superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the clerk will call speakers' names in the order received. At the podium, speakers are asked to state their full name and address and to spell their last names. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the Sunshine Law, the board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules.
Again, good morning. We'll now begin this morning's work session with a Neola policy review. Attorney Powers, can you navigate us on where we're moving from today on this part?
I will. If you look in your purple folders, which have been provided to each of you, there is a, starting off the second page, is a work session topics list, and that indicates the things that we will be working on beginning today. Now, these are the bylaws that we're working on today. Bylaws, unlike the other policies that we've been working on, these are essentially completely owned by the board. Staff, as to other policies, the relevant staff member which would have an input on that, is kind of absent here because these are ones that dictate how you are going to run your meetings. Now, fortunately, this may, at the school board's discretion, go relatively quickly today. And that is because the process of vetting these bylaws as they are here has already taken place with a prior board, and I believe that Ms. Thrower and Ms. King may have been on that board before. As to the generalized, Mr. Cummings, I believe also was there. They were screened, looked at prior, so these aren't first impression bylaws. Now, bylaws tend not to be terribly controversial, but there are within the bylaws as we have taken Neola's suggested bylaws and then pre-screened them. And then you'll see on the right of the topics list, they indicate Neola updated. During the interim time between the last bylaws sessions that we had met with regarding the bylaws, there are certain legislative updates, case law updates, which dictate that those bylaws need to be changed a little bit. And those are placed in red writing to the right of those, so you can see where those are. Now, I would both welcome your commentary and also caution that modifications to the bylaws can have, small modifications can have big consequences because it changes the way that you go about holding your meetings, doing things, conducting business. So, as we go through here-
Last phrase again? That last phrase you-
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. They can change the way, small modifications to the bylaws can alter the way that you conduct business. They can alter the way that you go about setting up meetings, you go about doing things. Some of the things that might be altered could have consequences that make, that pull it outside of either Roberts Rules of Order or outside of statute as to what we're required to do. So, certainly, if there's any item which requires further discussion, we'll bring that to the forefront and talk about what those are because you're certainly welcome to make changes as you see fit. Now, as we go through, I will ask for Mr. Whitmer, our Neola attorney, to be discussing any questions you may have specifically as to why the bylaws are the way they are, and I will weigh in as well, so we'll get through this together. If you don't have any questions, starting now, we can begin and pull forward any policies that we might wish to encounter first on the bylaws. Now, Mr. Whitmer, is there anything that you wish to start with, or did I cover that?
Covered.
Okay.
Okay. So then, let's start at the beginning and-
Oh, I will, and I will say, I'm sorry. We've already made one edit, and that was, there was an address edit from the 512 Southeast-
Thank you.
To the 1614.
That's a tab I had.
I didn't mean to steal your thunder, but we caught that, so.
No, that's fine. Okay, perfect. So, that's Policy 0113, page seven, that we're already fixed. Perfect. And in case you're looking at your folder, Mr. Browning, in case you hadn't seen this folder, our page numbers are actually at the top of the page this time. So, it has the date in the far left corner and then the page.
We gotta move it around on you, so that you-
Board, I had a question on definition of superintendent. It's page four. And it says that implies the authority to delegate responsibilities to appropriate staff members unless prohibited by law. And I'm wondering if we also say prohibited by law or by policy because I believe that there are a couple of policies that we have designated that the superintendent is the only person, and that may not necessarily be by law. But this says that superintendent implies the authority to delegate the responsibilities to appropriate staff members unless prohibited by law. I would like to say "or" by policy, if you guys agree. Can you remember? I feel like there was a policy or two that we specifically said the superintendent and not his or her does. I don't remember how we said it, but I can't remember which one it was, but there was at least one that we-
That might have been the alcohol regarding MPA campus, and it may have-
Maybe.
Yes, ma'am. It may have also been regarding our, there was another that had to do with medical leave in which we indicated that superintendent-
That's right. It had to be the superintendent.
So, there would be a couple of rare instances in which that would be true. It's a good catch.
So, should we make that change?
I would say so.
Okay. Y'all all agree with that?
Or board policy. Like the principal definition says, prohibited by law or board policy.
Right. Exactly that same language, I think. That would be perfect. Yeah, there it is. Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Whitmer. Paging over to my tabs. I don't know if you guys have things that you saw. The next questions I have are in the bylaw number of standards of ethical conduct, which is 124, and that's page, well, 16, 17, 18. I'm not sure if you guys had any questions before this one, but this is one that has in here Select Option 1 or 2. So, first of all, I guess we need to kind of figure that out. But if we're going through this one, I note on page 17 that our definition there, where the discrimination paragraph essentially that we use is there, and there's a kind of a hanging number eight there that is, the numbering kind of got off. But on page 18, the same paragraph is not there.
Right.
The same paragraph is?
Not there. So, under C, number two on page 18, so the obligation to the profession of education. Let me make sure. Yeah, obligation to the profession of, so that's C, number two. The district staff, yes, number two. That is not our group of paragraph, whatever that we have referenced previously.
You see it right, Terry? Yeah.
Where are you at?
Page 18, C, number two, and the page numbers are at the top of the page.
Yeah.
C, number two. I have another question on this page two, but-
We'll edit that. And I should also say, we'll alter that to the standards that we've used in others.
Oh, you're talking about the, that Dirty Dozen thing?
Yeah, the harassment paragraph. So, it's corrected on the previous one under Section A, but it's not corrected on Section C.
Yep.
And also regarding any of the formatting issues where there's a paragraph that's hanging or leaves a-
Right.
A number that shouldn't be there.
Right.
We are unable to fix that directly here.
Okay.
Those go through and get automatically cleaned by Neola.
And grammatically, while we're in that same section, grammatically, we also need to correct the plural-singular arrangement. Actually, immediately above Item C, it says district staff members, administrators, and official. It seems as if we have, when it says "and," we obviously need to have officials with an S. When it says "or," then you don't have to, but-
Everything else is plural, so it should be plural.
Yeah, so that one should be plural as well as number one under Item C. So, we just had some plural-singular issues on this page.
Officials on six-
Six and one.
And C1.
And then C1, yes.
And two. Well, two is changing, right?
Right. And it's right.
No, two is right. Two is okay.
First of all, we have to actually make an option because-
Okay. Okay, so, yeah.
If we want Option 1 or Option 2, we need to X the box that we want.
Okay. So, the first section is if we want Option 1, then we'll fix the things under Option 1. If we want Option 2, then we'll fix the things under Option 2.
So, the way I read this, and maybe you guys read it differently, but the delineation between Options 1 and Options 2 are essentially Option 1 lays out all of the ethical standards, and Option 2 is if the board wants to create our own. Is that?
That's how I read it.
So, I mean, I don't, unless we want to sit here and create our own-
I don't think we ought to create one.
I'm happy to go with the statutory limit and just keep it simple.
Right.
I think it's safer to go with what's there.
With what's already there, right.
You can convince me there's a reason to do otherwise.
One.
That would be Option 1.
Option.
Option 1.
I'm Option 1.
Okay. Mr. Browning? Mr. Browning? Okay.
So, Option 1 with the Corrections to Items B6 and C1, pluralizing official to officials. Okay. There is a checkbox in the second paragraph. We need to determine whether or not that wording should remain or not.
Where at?
Districts choose to leave it, and some do not.
On page 16.
And it says, "Board members must have a sincere desire to serve the educational needs of the community. Decisions must be based on the best interest of students and not on political or personal interests."
And that's on page 16?
Page 16. It's the second paragraph.
Second paragraph. So, do we have to check that box?
Whether or not we want to include it.
Oh.
Seems like a pretty logical statement.
I think it's, personally, I think it should be in there.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay. Checking it and checking it.
Everybody in agreement?
I'm indifferent.
You're indifferent?
Indifferent.
I'm indifferent on that statement because we're in a political position, and even though that box is checked, you know, I don't know. So, I'm indifferent on that one.
Okay.
I got what you're saying.
See what I'm saying?
Because we're elected, so just by nature, it's political.
Yes, politically.
Yeah, and usually there is an agenda of some type, you know? And then if that's checked, so I think that, I mean, we could put it in there, but I don't know if it's, I'm just indifferent.
It sounds bureaucratic to me as well. I'm, you know, either way is fine. I'm gonna make the decision based on the students and not-
Do we have to use the whole sentence? Do we have to use that whole sentence?
Yeah, can we just end a period, "a best interest of students"?
Students, I was gonna say, "in the students." And just take that last clause, that "in" off of it.
Yeah, I like that better.
What about that, Ms. King?
Because, yes, I agree with that too of just taking it out because otherwise it reads, "decisions must be made based on the best interests of students and not on political or personal interests." Okay, so if there's a "not" in there, then what's the consequence? And if there's no consequence, then why have it?
Well, and it also questions if your personal interests also are in the best interest of students, which oftentimes our personal interests are in the best, so I mean, it's questioning whether or not we have a personal interest in the interest of, in what's best for students. I don't know. I'm fine with putting a period there. I like that.
Better too. I think it's much cleaner.
Anything else with this one, with this particular policy?
Are we good with "in the, that students," with the period?
Yep.
Everybody good?
Hi.
There's another option in here on page 20. This one's full of options.
That would be if you chose Option 2.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Is it gift?
Well-
Is it gift section?
It depends.
This is on gift acceptance.
End of Option 2 begins on page 20, so-
This is on gift acceptance.
Okay. I do have something I'd like to weigh in on this here. The, as to the, as to the gifts option, a board may choose to have with any of its amounts and reporting requirements more stringent and strict requirements than are within Florida statute. However, this causes frequent confusion. And in general, many would argue, and I think I would be among them, that Florida statute is sufficiently stringent regarding the gift obligations and especially clear so that altering it further may result in, and we have some dueling policies right now that are a little more stringent than statute in some cases as well as to these reporting requirements. So, this one is as to board members only, though. Keep that in mind. This particular policy is as to board members only. So, if you wish to go with just the statutory options, then you would choose, for example, under Option A1 there, valued in excess of, and statutory limit is $50. So, you would choose $50.
I think we should just stick with the statute.
It's what it's there for. Because a school board member can always refuse a gift, too, you know? And so, yeah. I'm fine with statute.
I'm in agreement. I like it clean. Statute is, I think if we start changing and adding different amounts, it kind of blurs the, makes it cloudy.
Right, the statute's there for a reason.
Yeah. So, I can stand on the statute all day. So, I'm fine with the statute.
Not holier than the statute.
No.
Okay.
And can you make sure to point out if there's other ones that have options? And we need to make sure that we address those even if board doesn't pull them up, okay?
All right. Okay.
So, we're actually choosing Option 2 in that one, correct?
One moment here.
No, because Option 2 is to choose this option if you want to prohibit board members from accepting gifts entirely.
And-
Hey, man, I'm looking at, okay, I'm looking at it wrong, okay?
Statutory limit is $50 under Option A1.
I see it.
And that's, although it might seem odd that we would say we want to allow board members to accept gifts, when you go below $50, $50 is put there as what they call a de minimis amount. So, that if somebody accepts a coffee cup or a, you know, pencil with your, then it's kind of irrelevant. No gift whatsoever would really hamstring you from accepting small plaques of ceremonial value or anything like that, so.
So, we're good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We can move on if anyone has any policies that have identified. And as we, when we get close to finishing, if there are any that have additional options we need to choose, then I will make sure we go back to those. But we're going well so far with the ones that we've-
So, I had a question on the policymaking policy. Page 23. And the policy itself is 0131. And my question is just, I know that in the back in these policies, it specifies the areas where we will do reviews of policies for community relations, for philosophy and goals, all of these reasons that we would review policy. I'm just curious to know, knowing that we're now multiple years that we haven't done a full review of everything, if we need to somehow put in our policy that we review the entire policies every two years or something like, just so we don't get in this predicament that we're in right now, where we're having to do a full redo of so many things. And I don't know if that's the right place for it or if that's something other districts do to actually- I feel like when I went to the policy session for Florida School Board Association, they had us look through our policies and find, where does it tell you how often you're reviewing your policies? We obviously didn't have anything in ours at the time, but I just, I'm not sure if this is the right place for it, but other than all of the delineations in the back telling us why we might review policy, I'm just curious if we actually would want to do an overhaul, or at least, not an overhaul, but a full book review every couple of years.
Every few years.
Mr., yeah, Mr.-
May I say, I don't think it would be in this particular bylaw. This is a procedural one about adopting. But it could be, you could insert that toward the back of the bylaws where the other reviews are in there, if you want.
Okay. Okay.
Now, that used to be under state law that you had to do it every, was it every two years? And they dropped that. So, school boards are now not required under the law to have any particular time limit. So, most districts have gone with a periodic or regular or something. But they, you can certainly put in a time if you want. That would be a local thing.
So, Neola doesn't have a recommendation on how often it should be reviewed?
No.
Well, because Neola does periodic updates whenever there's a legislative change, which may be federal, state.
It's continuous, really.
I like periodic rather than have a bureaucratic hoop to jump through because you can begin to strangle a board with that type of thing. Just a point.
Sure.
That, that, a conscientious board with advisory staff can address these things. And if you don't, you're not negligent by putting those two-year things. You begin to become a slave to the bureaucratic steps and that you may not even be able to follow. That's just a comment from this board member.
And I understand the argument for sure. I don't see it as being bureaucracy to hold ourselves to a standard, obviously, whenever we have statute telling us the two things we're responsible for are policy and budgeting. So, I think policy is such a huge part of what we do, and getting, I don't want to say bogged down, but there's so many other things that come to the board on a regular basis and so many other things that we are held to specific timeline standards when we do have to do the budget and things like. I don't see it being a problem to hold ourselves to something that we would want to, and it doesn't say we have to go through these six, seven, eight work sessions, however many we've done now. But the reason we're having to do this now is because we haven't held ourselves for years to reviewing them. And periodic, to me, doesn't give enough strictness, doesn't give enough-
Accountability.
Accountability. That's a much better word.
That's the word I'm thinking of.
Thank you. A much better word. Accountability. I think that, I would not say that previous boards have lacked accountability because they haven't reviewed policies. I wouldn't say that either. But my concern is at some point that once we get all of these policies established, there's, I mean, Neola is a vendor. I mean, they're great at what they do, but who's to say that we, six, seven, eight years from now, don't use Neola and we don't have in our policy that says that we're gonna review on a certain timeline, whereas Neola does it every two years? But if we aren't using Neola as a vendor, then we don't have a policy that's at, yes, sir.
Also, it's true that Neola is reviewing things that come forward that it knows about, but it doesn't, it's not here in the district, and you may want to change policies locally for other reasons, so.
I would offer that we have something in writing that is considered a trigger to have a conversation, that it's going to be brought up.
May I suggest that at our organizational meeting, which is every year, that we, along with voting on board chair and the other items we do setting the calendar, that without specifically saying that there will be some review due at that time, that a discussion be held regarding the need for-
Exactly. Love it.
The need or lack thereof for a policy update. That way, when we look back and we- Right. If we look back and we see that within the last few months, we've already had a policy update, and we anticipate having another one coming up in the future, that that's addressed. And if we notice that, for whatever reason, it has been some length of time, each board member at least then has an opportunity to voice that. And then we, and then we can set any mandate as to what we need to do.
So, are you saying that when we have our reorganizational meeting every year, that it would be in the agenda or the topics of the reorganizational meeting that we at least address the need for or not to-
Right. Bragging.
To do it. And the reason, I'm thinking, there are other things that we review on a yearly basis, such as code of conduct. Review those things on a yearly basis to make sure that we are current and that we are addressing those issues. So, I could go for us at least addressing it at the reorganizational meeting and saying- So I could go for us at least addressing it at the reorganizational meeting and saying that, because at least it puts us on a yearly timeframe of saying that we didn't just go by it.
Right.
Versus periodically.
Well, and then it would be, I mean, that, that, that could essentially be nothing more than an action trigger.
Correct.
Which we discuss, we say, just for the words unification, we had a policy update seven months ago, three months ago, whatever the case may be. We're due for one coming up in a couple of months, or nothing looks on the horizon, in which case no further action is taken. Or on the other hand, if we look and say, it's been over a year, it's been, we mentioned this at the last organizational meeting, that we expected an update to come and we haven't gotten one yet, so let's, let's look at, let's look at that consideration.
Right, right. And this makes it more of an actionable document. There's, you know, I despise putting in a bunch of work and then something that's just going to collect dust on a shelf that we're not going to refer to, that's not going to be active. So I'm definitely in support of a, of a trigger. And I love having it at the organizational meeting. I think that makes perfect sense.
Agreed.
If there is a need for action, apparent need for action, you don't have to wait for some trigger event.
Sure.
Two years, three years, whatever, we'll catch it then. I think that as long as you're under statute, you're appropriate, and then you can act immediately, or you can defer, but you do get a reminder at the organizational meeting.
Right, we can do it anytime. A need arises, if Neola has updated a bunch of things, then that...
Right. We're not bound by, yeah, we're not bound by just waiting for the reorganizational meeting, but then the need arises, we could still move forward, so.
That is our tickler on the calendar, so to speak.
That's right.
We also have, that might bring us to the next section of 0151, which is the organizational meeting, which I believe is on page...
I think it was fifty.
We'll skip, if you don't mind. Are we, are we then done with what we were on with legislative, legislative policymaking, that statute?
Yes.
Okay. Then, because this came up, let's move over to the organizational meeting, page fifty-three. And it may be simple enough to add a line within there that indicates such a trigger. Nope, sorry, that's, yeah, page fifty.
Fifty-three.
Yep, that's it. So electing chair and vice chair and review of pol-, I don't know how we want to word that, but...
Organized by electing a chair, by chair and as, as well as review the need for policy updates.
So organized by electing a chair and vice chair. And how did you say that, Nancy? I liked it.
As well as review the need for policy updates.
Yeah, I think so.
It could be that simple.
Yeah. So right after the, where, in the very first sentence, where it says electing a chair and vice chair, very first sentence, very first paragraph, after vice chair, then say as well as... However, Nancy?
Reviewing the need...
Reviewing.
For policy updates.
Or any policy update.
Policy updates, yep.
And I think that makes it sufficiently clear that we're not, we're not setting ourselves up to have a policy update at the organizational meeting, but simply that we're, that triggers the process of asking, do we need to do so? And if so, then the board will direct the appropriate staff and legal to do so.
Right.
But we don't need to put that in, in there, that's...
I think that it's updates for policy, manual updates, because we're reviewing for review, I don't think we want to...
The last word should be update.
As well as review the need for policy manual updates.
Do we want to say it that way, or just, I mean, I don't mean to nitpick, but as was, as well as reviewing the need for any policy updates?
Yes, I like that better.
Just any policy, yep.
More general. Any policy updates.
And one space between any and policy.
And remove the word manual.
Yes.
Remove the word manual between policy and updates. Remove it.
Say manual update, policy update.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Now, I went down a little bit of a side trail there. We also, I can, unless someone has one in the meantime, I can lead you to another that has options, and that is policy 0147.1, that's pages forty-six and forty-seven. Page forty-six and forty-seven.
We're going backwards, okay.
0147.1, travel and per diem.
Okay.
Oh, okay, and I see the first option, travel, it's the one, two, one, two, three, fourth section down, travel on official business within Marion County, is that what you're referencing, attorney powers?
Whereas this shall not be reimbursed, or shall be reimbursed, that section.
Right.
The in-county travel.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I saw, I just had it circled, because I was like, why are there brackets here?
Right.
Now I understand that it was a choice.
So I would presume that we wish to choose the first option, that official business performed within Marion County by members of the board shall be reimbursed at the maximum rate allowed by Florida statute. Said mileage is determined by actual odometer reading if travel is performed by personal automobile. Or the board could choose simply not to allow reimbursable travel within Marion County.
Well, the problem with that is, is that it says if travel is performed by personal automobile, it won't be reimbursed, which opens the door to each board member in the future wanting to have a car supplied by the district. You know, you could take it to that level. So that's my issue with that. The first one, I think, also needs to be adjusted if we go with it, because it says said mileage shall be determined by actual odometer reading. And I think the way it's been done forever is the folks downtown know the amount of mileage that it takes to go from school to school, and then they do rely on us declaring mileage from our odometer. But again, that's also looked up, and you can look it up, you know, distance between Greenway Elementary School and Oak Crest. So it, those are the two things that I wanted to point out.
And so, for example, you don't, as a board member, you don't report, you know, my odometer was at this particular setting and then was, you know, I traveled forty-seven miles by my odometer. You instead know, they know the distances between certain areas, and so the distance between North Marion High School and Lake Weir High School would be one that is a known quantity. So that wouldn't necessarily be actual odometer reading, is that what you're saying?
Right, and also, too, in this day and age, you can put it right in your phone. I'm at Greenway now and I need to go over to Oak Crest, so you just put it in MapQuest and it tells you.
Well, I mean, I, I think frankly, we could eliminate the means of measurement and simply say that it's, travel on official business performed by Marion County by members of the school board shall be reimbursed at the maximum rate allowed by Florida statute, chapter 112.061.
I agree.
And I would say may, may rather than shall.
Yeah, I agree with, I agree with that. I, I know. And, and I, that's what I was trying to, to look up the statute, and I don't know if my computer's going to come on.
Well, I think it goes to, if you, if you submit it, it's going to be reimbursed.
Right. May, may seems to give an option to the district. If that, that option really is within the, with the board member, if the board member chooses not to turn in mileage, the board member does not get the mileage.
Well, we could say if submitted. In other words, you, you don't have to be in the program of reimbursement if you don't elect to do it. So I think you should say it, because shall is mandatory.
So if...
And then you're getting into mandatory submission of mileage and what have you that, that to me is just total unnecessary bookkeeping.
What is this, how does, how does the statute read?
That's what I was looking, trying to...
That's, that's what I would rather say.
Because I'm interested in knowing if the statute says that it's from the board member's house or their residence to, because then that, that's, I'm going to look up statute and see what it, or maybe you know, Mr. Whitmer.
If it, if it's closer, for example, you know, if you live out in Don Ellen or whatever, and you're at Greenway and you're going to Oak Crest, to me, it would be unfair to, to charge the district, like, oh, okay, now I'm going to calculate it like I went home and went back out again, if you didn't in fact do that. I like your idea, Board Member Browning, of if submitted, travel on official business performed within Marion County by members of the board shall be reduced at the maximum rate, or shall be reimbursed at the maximum rate allowed by the statute, period. I think that covers the basis.
You want to participate in it, fine, but shall is mandatory.
Right.
Statue indicates that all mileage shall be shown from point of origin to point of destination, and when possible, shall be computed on the basis of the current map of the Department of Transportation. Vicinity mileage necessary for the conduct of official business is allowable but must be shown as a separate item on the expense voucher. So I don't see anything that specific, reimbursement for expenditures related to the operation, maintenance, and ownership of vehicles shall not be allowed when privately-owned vehicles are used on public business. Reimbursement is made pursuant to this paragraph, and that is currently under D1, D1A, it says a traveler should be entitled to mileage allowance at a rate of forty-four five, forty-four point five cents per mile. Yeah, I don't see anything specific that indicates, you know, anything other than what we've just discussed. We could, I don't see that there is a need to have actual odometer reading listed...
Right.
When there are alternate methods to calculate the same.
Correct.
I think shall already implies that if submitted.
If submitted.
But if we wish to have that in there, we certainly can.
Didn't the statute say something about allowable? Didn't the statute just say something about allowable?
Hmm.
So that, that kind of implies to me that if the person chooses to submit, that's how the statute reads. Did you see that in there?
Or if we just said if submitted.
It's already in the statute by saying allowable. If they submit it.
If submitted, then here are the rules. If, if not submitted, you're not in the game.
I'm fine with either, you know, I'm fine with either it's not the hill I want to die on or discuss all day.
Well, I mean, we...
I'm not dying either, but I, I do like the idea of it being, of any policy being clear, if you can do it.
Well, I can open the can of worms and ask, how long do you want board members to be able to have before they...
Have to submit the mileage.
Have to submit it. Is it within, currently, it's, I believe it's...
Isn't it, isn't it...
I believe this is silent on that factor.
It's silent on what?
If it's silent, leave it.
Yeah.
Well, then, but what I mean then is with the, with the shall, if submitted, because the if submitted becomes something that someone could say...
By when?
You know, right. And...
They could come every...
I, I, I submit once a year, and here you go, I've, I've traveled, you know, five thousand miles.
Or I'm out of office now and I submitted everything after I went out of office. I mean, but see, that's the thing, that's the rabbit holes.
I know, and I was like, I think we're...
It's unnecessary. If you submit, then you trigger it. If you don't submit, you don't trigger it. I, you know, I, I don't want to be, this is, this is detail that I don't want to have to deal with. Like, Board Member Browning, you have not submitted your mileage. Make that happen. Sorry, that's not happening.
So this is leaving.
You know, so just, if submitted, you shall do this and this and this. If, if submitted brings up something else, then go ahead and address it. But just to that point, if you don't submit it, you don't have an issue.
Shall comma if submitted?
Say it again?
Shall comma if submitted comma be reimbursed at the maximum rate allowed by FS, chapter 112.061.
Oh, no, Chairman, what are you, you're, you're thinking over there, so...
I'm thinking we're finna open up a can of worms.
Yeah.
I'm thinking leave it like it is.
I would say just leave it. I mean, I'm not sure why we're wanting to box. I mean, I, I think it's important to have certain things, but when you start boxing and putting everything in there, you...
Yeah, shall is mandatory, and I don't want to be mandatory if I'm not in the game.
So I think we have figured out.
Well, the shall is, shall be reimbursed, meaning that the shall, the...
That's, that's to the district.
Directive is to the district.
Doesn't, doesn't reimburse mean that you've done something?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So upon further examination, I think it's very clear, because you can't get reimbursed for something you don't submit.
Exactly.
All right.
That's why I said leave it, watch it is.
Do you agree with that analysis?
Right, yeah, I, I think it's...
If you're not, if you're not obligated simply by traveling the miles, then fine.
So what...
I don't think there's anything in here that would obligate a, a board member. I can see the point, but I, I don't, you know, as a logger, I have to avoid seeing how many angels can dance on that event, too.
So what's interesting about this is this is specific to in-county travel. But if you look at the out-of-county travel, which is within the state of Florida, it doesn't list anything about reimbursement for mileage. So I'm just curious to know why that detail isn't there. Talks about expenditures for travel outside the district or for cellular telephones, but it doesn't talk about the maximum rate allowed. I, I don't know, may, maybe it's, maybe it's all still there, it's, we're, we're really hung up on the travel in-county and I don't, maybe it's, maybe it is there, but it doesn't talk about reimbursement for out-of-county travel. I would see that being more pertinent, perhaps, but maybe not.
I think the understanding is that it would be reimbursed, but the first two paragraphs there are about what cannot happen, and that really, they seem out of place to me, but the place to put a statement about reimbursement would be the beginning of the third paragraph, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Under out-of-county.
Approved in advance. That's the ticket right there.
Yeah, and, and you could say, you could say shall be reimbursed.
That's paragraph four.
Also, or shall be, just shall be reimbursed, travel outside the county shall be reimbursed.
Where are you at? Where are you at?
Paragraph...
Three, under, third paragraph under out-of-county.
Travel outside the county that exceeds...
That exceeds five hundred? Requires prior approval?
In front of it.
What, oh, if it exceeds, yeah, never mind.
Oh, if it exceeds five hundred dollars.
Then it is, yeah.
Well, and so then that makes me wonder if the calculation of the excess of five hundred dollars is including mileage, which some of us don't take that mileage even when it's out of count. So that's, I'm, that, that's, that's where this gets hairy, because whether or not we have to get approval from the board for five hundred dollars, if we are calculating, we drive to Tallahassee and it's a hundred and some odd dollars in mileage back and forth, like, I'm not sure what that number would be, do the math really quick. But if that's what's causing that trigger for us to have to have that approved because it exceeds five hun-, I, I don't know, it, this, this is just a complicated one for me.
I have a, an additional comment, and that is the item number one, members of the school board have a duty to promote these interests. It seems to me that that's, that statement is primarily a justification to be reimbursed, rather than imply there's a duty to attend a specific item, which is kind of interesting. I, if it, if it's necessary to get reimbursement to make the statement, okay, fine, but you do not have a duty to... do not have a duty to, to travel, unless you specifically see that as pertinent to what you, it's a personal decision, rather than a duty, especially if you're, if you're-
I think you have a duty to travel.
Well, the way-
Especially within, within the county.
But, but why, why you have, in any, you, you do not have a duty to travel, you, you, you have a duty to, to go somewhere, that's fine, and it may include travel, but the duty to travel is an interesting, interesting concept, and it, it appears to me that the only reason it's there is to justify reimbursement, that, that's what it appears to be. So I, I, I just bring it up, take a look at it, tell me what you think.
Ms. Thor.
It further clarifies right below that, that members of the board seeking reimbursement for travel must utilize district-approved forms. So that to me is very clearly says that it's a choice, whether you seek or not. I don't think it's a choice at all, we got elected saying that we were going to and have a duty to do a lot of things, which includes promoting the best interest of the district, otherwise why are we here?
And engage in, so that, the entire sentence reads, members of the school board have a duty to promote the best interests of the district and are expected to engage in meaningful professional development to enhance their leadership abilities and fulfill their responsibilities.
Right.
So-
And so members of the board.
Basically, therefore, meaning so, that travel from time to time would be in the county, so I would say best interest of the district or visiting schools, best interest of the district is going to the Olympic event that we just went to, or, you know, whatever those might all be, that would be in-county travel, and out-of-county from time to time will be where we engage in meaningful professional development.
And/or out of the state.
And/or out of the state, and, and so, I, I believe if you don't want to say duty, I think the word would be changed to obligation. I, I mean, members of the school board need to understand this is our job, and, and if we're just sitting here, coming to meetings and not doing the work that it actually takes to become a better board member, I, I think that's, while this is, the intent of this specific bylaw is not saying that board members are obligated or have a duty or whatever that might be, that's not the purpose of this, the purpose of this is for travel, but my hope is that any board member sitting at this, in, in this room is participating in meaningful professional development, whatever that looks like to you, enhancing leadership abilities, I mean, we've all been in leadership roles for dozens, if not, you know, decades of years, and, but that doesn't mean that my professional development of becoming a good board member stopped whenever I sat here, because I-
But that isn't the question, the question here is how you do it, this is about reimbursement. So if I do it by Zoom, or if you, or if the chairman elects to have the meeting without the travel, let's just suppose a future board, and that's what we're doing, we're setting policies, so if the future board has the meeting with the Health Department without traveling to Tallahassee-
Sure.
They have met their duty, and there is not a duty to travel.
But I don't think there will ever be a time that we would say a board member would not travel to a school, that will always be-
You may travel to a school, but I don't think that's what we're talking about.
And that's in-county, but that, that's in-county travel, is traveling to schools.
Traveling to a school or not, you, how many do you go to? In other words, once it becomes a duty, if you say, do, and I'm, I'm, I'm sort of thinking in terms of United States Navy, if you have a duty to perform, you have a duty to perform, if you don't have, you know, and, and it cannot be on the other person to decide how many duty stations you arrive at, but if you have a duty to be, you better be at that duty station. This is not a duty station being at a school, you may be at seven, you may be at two, you may be at one, or you may be at none, you may be at a hundred, it's your call, it's not a duty.
I can give, perhaps, clarify a little bit, as to a legal answer. The first sentence, members of the school board have a duty to promote the best interests of the district and are expected to engage in meaningful professional development to enhance their leadership abilities and fulfill their responsibilities, that's what's known as a prefatory clause. The second, in doing so, members of the board may need to travel from time to time in the county, out of the county, that's called the op-
That's already there.
That's called the operative clause.
That's already there.
The prefatory clause does not limit or expand the scope of the operative clause, it's much like with the Second Amendment, a well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state doesn't change the operative clause of the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed, it's more of a, kind of an explanatory, but it doesn't create any obligation as the operative clause does. So leaving it will not have any legal impact-
Correct.
-or interpretive impact, but it's up to you.
The clause is already there, the clause is already there, it just states, we do have a duty, but it does say, we, it, that duty may require you to travel.
And any such duty is not created from this policy.
Right.
That's, that's-
Right.
Okay, so we're gonna leave it as is?
That would be my recommendation.
Okay.
Which one?
Did we clear up Ms. Vice Chair's issue about the out-of-county travel? I don't think we cleared that up.
It's un, it's understood in the policy.
The out-of-county travel? We did, we did not clear that up, did we?
By adding that, they've added it into that out-of-county travel shall be reimbursed at the maximum allowed by-
For the statutes.
Just adding it, well, I mean, it's, I mean, I, I think that-
That clears it for you?
It becomes, yeah, I mean, I think it becomes, since we didn't add the if submitted to the in-county, I don't know that we need to add it to the out-of-county.
Right, 'cause if submitted becomes redundant through the term reimbursement, which-
Yeah.
Are you comfortable, uh, in terms of my-
I, I am, I'm happier with the, with that placed in there regarding out-of-county travel to make it on par with the in-county travel, so yes.
This is about reimbursement, is what it's about.
Right, yeah, it's, it's-
If you don't submit it, it, it's moot.
Right, and that's, that's always true. Okay, additional choices within this policy.
Was this on dependent care?
This is for federal funds.
Oh, we had this discussion.
All right, yes, we, we touched on this a little bit before, and this is specifically where there's reimbursement from federal funds, and so these are essentially the rules as they exist, and we get to choose each of these, or choose not to have those. And one is commercial airfare costs in excess of the basic least expensive unrestricted accommodations are unallowable, except where, and, I mean, you can read each of those. And then temporary dependent care costs, federal law may, may permit these costs in certain scenarios and may restrict those costs in certain scenarios. So as to any further detail on what other boards have decided, I'll let Mr. Whitmer speak to that if he has anything additionally he wants to-
I think these are in the code of federal regulations, and you can be silent on it or check it as an option, I think it applies either, either way.
And I think that leaving it in here perhaps helps to clarify for anyone who may be doing travel which is reimbursed via federal funds, and there, there may be certain areas of dilution also, for example, if we receive a federal grant, and the federal grant allows us to retain an employee, but we're paying for that employee's travel to some conference or something like that, it, just because they're on a federal grant doesn't necessarily mean that we may have to follow these regulations. However, where they apply, we should, and we should always be cognizant of them to do that analysis. So I would suggest that they are checked and left in, just so that they aren't overlooked or forgotten in the event that we do have a grant which is specifically to transport, you know, to, to allow employees to attend a specific conference or something like that.
And did we leave them in whenever we had the policy about this, 'cause there's a separate, this is our bylaws obviously, but we left them in on the policy side? 'Cause I just want to make sure we're consistent.
I don't remember.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're consistent, so if, if we decide to-
It would have been my advice at the time, but I don't know if it's-
Sure, I mean, if we decide to put them in here, but it's not actually in the policy, then we-
Where we landed, right.
Right, then this only is gonna apply to the board, as we talked about in the very beginning, 'cause bylaws essentially are board rules and then policies are everybody else.
Well, and, and, and just to be clear, these rules will apply whether we have them in here or not.
Right.
Right.
Having them in here essentially serves as a reminder that it is also, you know-
It's transparent.
This is the law, and so this is what we do, sure, I mean, let's add them both in, but I just, yeah, Terry, if you'll just verify, we do have them in the actual policy about it as well.
And I'll, I'll have, Terry, look in that and we'll report back-
Yeah, that's fine.
On that, so that we don't take everyone's time right now. The next one that we had some options on, okay, they are both in there, and this is as to policy, one moment here, six five five zero, travel in per diem, so yes, it's, we left it there, that was, that was the answer.
All right.
The other one that has options.
We already-
I think we've exhausted the options on, we've exhausted the options on this one. They're both gonna stay in. Now, we also have oh one six five point three, and that is going to be on page sixty-seven through sixty-nine, special and emergency meetings, this is-
I had a couple of questions before that, but we'll-
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine, we'll go ahead and remember what you-
Okay, we'll, we'll go back to those then.
That's fine.
Pages sixty-seven through sixty-nine, and this has also received a recent Niola update, so we will be getting the newest and cleanest version here.
I did have a question about this one, so I'll be interested to know what all our options are, but I, I also, I, this actually is a question for Elena when it comes to publication, especially whenever it is, in the event of an emergency or a special meeting that, that pops up, because our local publication is no longer printing on Saturdays, have we ever had Saturday as being, and this is a question for Elena, have we ever had Saturday as being our day of publication that we, okay, that was gonna be my question, 'cause we don't have a Saturday newspaper anymore, so I just want to make sure that that, in the event that we needed to have publication and we were lying on a Saturday, but if we're not, then that's, that's it.
Okay, many options in here.
So that wouldn't be a day that we count, is that what you're saying?
I mean, I just, I didn't know if we, whenever we had, like, in the event of an emergency meeting, that we're finding out on a, whatever day that we need to have one, on Monday, is Saturday the day of publication that we ever needed to use, and she says no, so.
Well-
Are we talking about emergency?
It still has to, it's, it still counts as time if, if we're, but we're never going to be able to initiate publication on a Saturday. So if it were Friday, we got it published, then Saturday counts as one of the days that it is published, or that, that it is, publication has been initiated, it's been seven days since the initial publication or whatever, in the case of an emergency meeting, seventy-two hours, but, or twenty-four hours, sorry, special versus emergency. So those are still, it's still a day that counts, like, like a business day as opposed to calendar day doesn't really apply.
Right.
So-
But if we had counted on-
We just can't advertise on that day.
If it's a seventy-two hour window, for example, that's a special meeting, I guess, that, I don't remember the difference in the two, you just mentioned that, seventy-two hours, then we would have to ensure that we weren't counting on a Saturday publication date, and we could have a Sunday publication date, and then the meeting would have to be held off, not on a Tuesday, or it would, I, I mean, I'm just, that, but if we've never counted on a Saturday publication date, then-
Well, that's correct, and even more so than that, the fact is that if on Friday we've decided that we wanted to have a special meeting or emergency meeting, emergency meeting only requires twenty-four hours, so Sunday would cover it, but if we decide that on Friday, it is extremely unlikely that we will get a publication that is set even for Sunday, so we're, we, we miss a deadline if we're not there by, well, I think it's normally about noon on Friday, or perhaps even the day before. So typically, all of our deadlines of it's gonna take seven days to advertise, we need to figure closer to ten, and that's because there's also time with preparing and setting it up and having them acknowledge. So as to options, at the bottom of that page sixty-seven, you see, option number one, note, as required by state law, choose this option if there is a daily newspaper of general circulation in the county, and that is true. So as to option one, and then numbers two through five below are optional methods of providing due public notice of an emergency meeting. In addition to number one, which is required by statute, you may choose all, some, or none of these options, so. Currently, I believe that these are all listed within policy as, as options, but where some counties do not have a paper of general circulation, these are the only options that they have. So we are entitled to use, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Whitmer, but we're entitled to use these options as well, instead of option one if the option one is unavailable to us.
Well, option, option two is if one isn't available to you, option one is where you do have the publication in the paper, but you also can do these other supplementary ways, that's what-
So these supplemental ways would be in addition to, if option one is available, we must do option one?
Yes.
Okay.
So-
The lack of Saturday means it's not available.
Yeah, that's why I-
No, it's still a, it's still a, there's still a paper of general circulation in the county, and so therefore I don't really see much reason to have these others, I mean, these others are ways that we can further inform the public, but we're essentially simply creating an obligation for ourselves.
So we do have a daily newspaper?
We do.
Right.
Currently.
Daily?
Yes, except Saturdays.
So then it's not daily?
It's, it's a daily newspaper, it just does not have the kind of publications that we need on Saturday, however, it's still, the paper is in general circulation.
So to Ms. Campbell's point, we do not have to move the date off to a Tuesday or a Wednesday because of the Saturday issue, the lack of publication on a Saturday.
We will, we will never be able to advertise on a Saturday.
Correct, and so we can use the other options, is that what your advice is?
No.
No, you have to use that.
Because we still have a paper of general circulation in Marion County, we are required to use that option.
Personally, I also am in favor of those things that are free to us, which would be providing a news release.
Social media.
Social media, posting to the district's website, I think all three of those things.
And on the door.
Probably already being done, yeah, if we posted it on the door, yes, I, I definitely would not say that we need to post a notice on the courthouse door, I, I would see that in very rural communities where they, the courthouse might be a regular place that people stop by on it, I mean, I have no idea why, but, I, I mean, I would, I would be fine with us adding that we could also add, provide a news release to other media.
Which can do that.
Which we can, as well as posting a notice on the district website and on approved social media platforms. We have an emergency meeting.
To her point, I, I'd like to see that decided, because that's, that could mean twenty-four hours in an emergency, and that matters.
No, in fact, it won't matter, because the fact is we still have to do option one.
We still have to print it in the paper.
You have to do the option one.
So if we don't do option one, doing every one of these other things, posting it on the county courthouse door and district website and wire service and everything else, is not gonna be sufficient, is that correct?
That's how I read it.
Well, I, I like, I like it.
If we select them, we must do them, okay?
I'm not sure that we're not doing them now, is my only, I mean-
Well, why don't we get some clarification on that?
Yes.
How are we advertising now? I know we're advertising the newspaper, and I see it on the district website, we now have a Facebook page, I can't remember whether or not it's on there or not, so what are we doing? We now have a Facebook page, I can't remember whether or not it's on there or not, so what are we doing?
I do not put anything on Facebook, or Twitter, or anything like that. I publish to the paper. If it is an emergency meeting, there isn't sufficient time to actually publish in the paper, so then it is simply put on the district website.
So if it's not an emergency meeting, it's published on the website as well, correct? Okay, so right now, we have two bases covered, which is the rule-
But wait just a second, I want to make sure, according to Mr. Whitmer, that if it's an emergency meeting, we still have to have it in the paper twenty-four hours in advance of that, is that by statute? I'm just, regardless of how we've done it before, I just want to make sure moving forward, if that's the way statute reads, because that very well may mean that we do need to have it on a Tuesday instead of a Monday.
Well, am I, maybe I missed something, but if we look at option two, and then it says note as required by state law, choose this option if there is not a daily newspaper of general circulation in the county. Would that mean if there wasn't the Saturday, would, is that when we could use that? It's not.
That's what I'm thinking.
That's what I'm thinking too, so why would it not?
Because if there's, if there's no print paper-
If there isn't, then this is your plan B, because you don't, we can't, emergencies don't ever fit in our box. So if we're going to be like, well, there's not a publication, and so we can't, to me, that's ridiculous, so I'm like, okay, this isn't working, what will work? And the way I read it, and that's when our attorney, am I misunderstanding that? Or am I correct? Ow, sorry, my arm was on that.
And this change on Saturday publication just went into effect this week.
Right.
So I mean, this is brand new.
Are you saying that's not, that makes it not a daily publication?
Because it's six of seven days.
Yes.
Correct, so it's not-
I think the day, Saturday's a day.
So, so it's six days, so if we don't have the six days and it just happened, I guess, because I didn't know about that, so then to me, that's option two, that we could use option two.
That's what I meant too.
Well, notice that it doesn't, say a newspaper of daily legal notice publication. It says of daily circulation, right? So-
It doesn't have it now.
Daily, daily general circulation.
We don't have it.
And we don't have it.
There is daily general circulation.
On Saturday?
Is that?
It's still printed online, or it's still posted online.
It's not printed.
I know, it's not printed, I know, I know there's-
It's not in circulation, and so it's not daily, and so we don't have that option. So we have the other options work, so if we have an emergency, we can move forward with those other alternatives and meet the emergency.
That's, I'm aware, I'm there too, because when I hear you don't have circulation on Saturday other than digitally or whatever, that means it's not daily.
Because not everybody has access to it.
Exactly.
So, I mean, preferably, yes, we would want to use option one, but if some weird thing, and like I said, you know, emergencies never happen on the day we think they, we want them to happen, then to me, option two just makes sense.
We just have to get legal clarification on what they constitute a daily newspaper.
Daily circulation, is it dirty circulation?
Right, but is it, does that include one paper on the weekend? I don't-
What is general circulation?
I don't know what-
That's the, that's, that's the answer.
But I mean, it'll spell, it spells it out, it's like, okay, at least one radio station. Well, we know there's radio stations always on Saturdays.
According to statute, I'm just curious to know what, what their definition of daily is.
It is daily newspaper of general circulation.
I understand, I just want to make sure that that's in fact what the law's interpretation is.
Well, it's ours.
Yeah, I was like, well, it's big, so, I mean, but it's telling us a reasonable, I mean, even when you look at it, reasonable number of times daily on it.
So then the question becomes, would we continue to, if we go with option two, would be, would we continue to post it in the newspaper as a notice of a meeting at all? Or would we use the other options that are available to us? Because let's face it, the circulation of the Ocala Star banner is not what it used to be.
Correct.
And if our intent and goal here, which it's, I believe it is of each and every board member, is to get the word out, so what's the best modern way to get the word out?
There are, there are two-
It is a moving target, because we have legislation within the county presently that's being considered that would vary it off the Star banner and would vary it into other bidders that would qualify, and it would remove that, that cost, that, the estimates that I've seen is like a hundred thousand versus five hundred thousand in terms of cost, and yet still get full circulation. So it just opens it to competition. So I, I think that we're on, onto something very important here, and that is that we meet our obligation, we never jeopardize the district by holding a meeting within a certain period of time in an emergency situation, and we do meet our obligation of, of notice by the other options, and it is, we do not have a daily newspaper, because a day is defined as a twenty-four hour rotation of the earth, so it's that simple.
Terry?
First of all, this policy is going to be affected under the one, six, five, point, I'm sorry, one, six, five, that's page sixty-three as well, as to notice requirements. Now, we're talking here about special and emergency meetings, however, also, even with regular meetings and the notice requirement, that will also be impacted if we alter anything here as well. Now, we have under emergency meetings, which is in what we're on right now, if you look under C, notice of emergency meetings shall be provided in a manner that is fair under the circumstances and necessary to protect the public interest. The board shall attempt to provide immediate public notice of all emergency meetings as follows, and then here's where we're outlining how we are going to do it. Now, that's indicating that it's, the, the notice is going to be provided in a manner that is as, as fair and necessary to protect the public interest, and what it's indicating is that if we have a newspaper of general daily circulation, that's the option we have to take, along with any other options we may. However, the question is, is the Star banner still an object, still a paper of daily circulation? And the definition of that is, there's actually a statutory definition that I'm trying to look up right now. Now-
We wouldn't like to have our policy based on a single company that obviously is, is in a trending diminished performance, so. So I think on a regular basis, I think it's prudent and incumbent on us to be able to take the strongest definition so that we're, we do not jeopardize the district when we proceed.
What, what does it define daily, general, what is defined, what is the definition of daily general circulation?
Working on that right now.
Next month, if it becomes, you know, say it lacks Tuesdays.
When I think daily, when I hear daily, I think seven days.
Yeah, exactly.
So, but why couldn't we have, preferably, we want option one. In the event, option one is not accessible, because it's a Saturday that we have to do this, option two, like, to me, that's just common sense, like that, right, it's an option. Option one, our paper, oop, it's on a Saturday, okay, we're not going to use option one right now, we're going to default to number two, and then move on.
If we had some major catastrophe and we needed to have an emergency meeting on a Sunday, like, what if we needed to have an emergency meeting on a Sunday?
It can, it can, I don't, it could be a hurricane, it could be anything. I think Dr. Gullett-
What if the, what if the printing press got damaged by a tornado?
That's what Dr. Gullett has to say, she might have a good opinion.
Thank you. Thank you, members of the board, I mean, that reality happened two years ago when schools were closed and we had the pandemic, so in some places where I was, it was on a Sunday.
Yeah.
So it could happen, yes.
I mean, and even just the, the way that this was worded, I mean, when I'm, when I'm thinking about essentially like public interest in when an emergency meeting might be held, limiting ourselves to just one publication that also puts all kinds of information behind a paywall, and people not having the ability to even see it electronically also is a detriment to what we're trying to do for the public notice.
I believe they amended that law and require now a, the legal notices be accessible to the public.
Even if it's not a paid legal notice, because in an emergency meeting, it isn't?
No, it would be a paid, the paid-
Has to be the, a paid legal notice, I mean, whenever it's an emergency?
It's paid by the board, not by the viewer.
No, right, I understand that, I'm just asking that in the event of emergency meetings, they are in fact just legal notice, it's not via, I mean, we have to, anyway.
Right, well, the point she's making is that the, the paper is, it's a certain size and it's, it's behind a paywall. The paywall is whether it's accessible to most people, and most people are not, or the-
They've amended, they've amended that law last year to make the lea, there was a big thing about this last legislative session. School boards and other agencies wanted to be able to just give notice on their website and have that be an official notice, but the legislature said, no, it has to, newspapers came in and changed it, and so now it has to be on the newspaper's website, but that has to be accessible to the public. But the board has to pay the newspaper to put it on there, but the newspaper not only does the print ad, but they have to put it on the website also, and it is available to the public. But you can also have the board, the district's website, you can just do that on your own.
I'd like to have the option-
And that's fifty point oh, one, one, three, I'm sorry, number, item two, but that just, that was referencing Mr. Whitmer.
Which one, I'm sorry?
That, there's a lot of information in Florida statute fifty point zero, one, one regarding publication. It does seem to draw distinction with publication, a daily newspaper of general circulation, not necessarily that it is generally, that is general daily circulation, but that it is a daily newspaper as opposed to a periodic or monthly newspaper or something like that, and it is in general circulation. So the question is, is it still a daily newspaper that publishes six days out of seven? That's, I'm trying to find what I can.
And when do we, what, what happens to five, and then what happens to four? And then to, to, to one of the, Ms. Campbell's point, the, Mr. Whitmer's, the, the paywall does matter, because access to the story or to the item is often, requires submission of some, some payment. And I see this on a regular basis, that you, you kick over, but the story does not come forward until you submit to that subscription program.
It's been confirmed, right, but it's been confirmed now, as of last year's legislative decision, that they're not behind paywalls anymore, so we've moved past that. My question is, you know, again, we, as a board, I believe we all want as much transparency as possible and, and make it available to people. So if we can go with option two, I agree with, with you, Kelly, you know, let's not hem ourselves in, and if, and if it's, if we can put it in the newspaper, then, then we'll do it, but if we can't, then we'll have these other options available, so we're not boxed in.
Well, and I, I am interested in seeing how the legislature addresses, while it isn't addressed yet, I believe, but what general circulation means, because just because the newspaper is available, I mean, just because it's available, a monthly subscription to our general circulation print publication is more than seventy-five dollars for a month, for a monthly subscription of our daily quote-unquote general circulation. We have more than three hundred fifty thousand people in Marion County, and they distribute to about fifteen to twenty thousand of those, so I'm not sure how the legislature also is defining general circulation, because thus why they're not having a Saturday publication any longer, so.
How about I propose this?
Yeah, go for it.
How about for right now, if we can do it, let's hit, somehow figure out option one preferably, if not, revert to option two, and then move forward, and then make a little note, and then in November, when we bring this back for our organizing, at our organizational meeting, then we could review and see what legislation says about it then, rather than hem it-
Which of the checkboxes should we check then?
Option one.
But, but no, I mean, the optional checkboxes, which of those should we check? Because that's, we go to-
Well, it should be, well, if we read two, it says as we, number two, as required by state law, choose this option if there is not a daily newspaper of general circulation in the county. So preferably, if there is one, option one, if we can do it. If not, I mean, can we check both, can we have something on there and say, option one?
Option two's information is also in option one, correct?
Right, yes, yes.
So we can choose option two and then choose every one of the one through five?
Yes, so that's it, option two.
But are we including the courthouse door? I mean, that's what I'm asking, so which of these options are we checking?
Well, let's read them, this-
That's what, because if we have that figured out, then we'll have this done either way.
I think we do top, option two, and then we go through and pick, let's go through.
Do we want to make a radio station announcement? Do we want to-
I think we made the radio announcement, I think we do the social media.
The press, the press release?
The press release, the wire, I'm not sure about the wire.
Wire services, I don't, I don't think we do wire service, no, Kevin's shaking his head now. But district website, social media.
So any of those would qualify?
The ones that we post, check.
Would we, do we just send a press release to radio, I'm sorry, I'm looking at Kevin, do we send press release to radio stations as well?
Well, if, if you look back at, it, it says, notice of, read it as a whole, notice of emergency meetings shall be provided in a manner that is fair under the circumstances and necessary to protect the public interest. The board shall attempt to provide immediate public notice of all emergency meetings as follows. Number one, the newspaper, general circulation.
I agree with that.
Number two, and then all the other options are other options. Now, it says, the board shall attempt to provide immediate public notice of all emergency meetings as follows. So are each of those ones which we will at least make an attempt to do in the event of, let's say, a hurricane, natural disaster, or something else, some other thing that requires an emergency meeting?
But each one of those is an option though, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's my, that's what I'd like to-
That's how I'm looking at it, all of them are options, we don't have to use all of them.
Doesn't mean we have to do it, but, because we don't know, you know, you might not be able to put it on the front door of the board if it got blown away in a tornado. So just because we check it doesn't mean we have to do it.
The definition of general circulation and a local, or, because this is no longer printed, the Star banner is no longer printed here locally, and, and it's like USA Today is in general circulation here, and, and it's done daily. However, we don't have to go to that specifically. It's very, it's, it's very fluid, what's happening in the newspaper world. So I, I would, I would want to come down very, as hard as possible in this discussion on giving us full flexibilities who don't jeopardize later challenges as to the authenticity of the meeting because of the way we noticed it. So I would like to see it, I would like to see it as open as possible per Ms. Kelly's comments.
Right, and, and that's a great point, and I agree. And if we also have the, the trigger for our organizational meeting, because media is so fluid right now, it'll give us that opportunity to look and say, oh, okay, are we still doing this right, are we still within statute?
Right.
And now the village's son has become the one of general circulation that is the most read, or, or any other newspaper that pops up, who knows what's going to happen? We don't know what's going to happen, so let's stay nimble and move on.
Just as a reminder, whenever the organizational meeting comes up, while I was so quick to turn away from the front door of the school, every school in the district, or the front door of the main office, or the front door of the county courthouse, while I was so quick to do that, I'm forsaking the potential that we could have no electronic communication available whatsoever.
Right.
So we, we do need to have additional options that are carrier pigeon.
And they're, yeah, they're valid.
I mean, that are, that are valid other-
As it says, attempts.
Right, right.
So, I mean, as, as you said, we ought to keep options open
Right.
and try to do what we can.
But that becomes a communication thing too, we don't want the district folks to think that they're going to get in trouble because they didn't post a notice of the meeting on Sunrise Elementary School's front door every two weeks. So Superintendent?
Thank you, I was actually going to see clarification, are we, is the board, is it the board's desire to have it on every school, because that will require some extra effort and work to make sure that they're all posted, and then by when, and, thank you.
I, I think some of these are like or, you know, instead of and, 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 or in the event that electronic communication is unavailable, then we resort to these options, or, you know, I feel like there's some caveat language that's missing.
Prudent judgment.
And we can wait until our organization meeting if you want, but-
I think we need to, I really do, you know, it's- You know, it talks, it talks about on the door of the schools and stuff like that. With security now, we, they can't even get to--
They can't get to the door, good point.
And I would have thought maybe a marquee, but every school doesn't have a marquee either, so.
I know.
Why don't we do what we're required to do by statute for now, and then leave it up to the superintendent as far as the other methods?
I think that's--
And then trigger it at our organizational meeting just to make sure we're on the right path.
Right.
For now, I would suggest where we say publishing a notice in a newspaper of daily general circulation in the county, we simply add a comma and indicate if available.
Okay.
And then we can put, we can design these, so we can, we can, as to all of the other options, we could have a sentence that indicates if unavailable, each of the following options--
May.
There you go.
And that would protect us from a legal challenge, which is a concern I have. We do want to get the word out, but we also--
And it also takes all, and it also takes all of those options and makes them only if option one--
If they can't be--
Is unavailable to us.
Doesn't seem prudent.
So, all right, we'll wordsmith that right now.
I like that. I can go over that.
Mark all those, and then if available.
I wouldn't mark wire services. I definitely would not.
Right, I don't think any of us wanted to do that.
No.
Guys, it's 10:30. I want to take a bathroom break.
Sounds like a plan.
Yeah, we don't have much time.
All right.
While you're smithing.
It's recess for 10 minutes.
Thank you.
We don't define daily by means--
Yeah, I don't--
We're back on, on the record with our Neola policy review. Let's continue with this conversation.
Okay, as we left, we were on policy 0165.3, special and emergency meetings. And I believe where we left off was the determination that we would for now leave the option one in place with the amendment if available. And if it is determined that such is not available, then the district will take all reasonable means to publish via any of the below alternatives, would be the language I would expect, or I would suggest. And then at that point, we will, we had indicated that wire services, we kind of know those are probably not going to be available in general.
Right.
Posting a notice on the county courthouse door may be available, so I would suggest that we leave that. On the, we can leave on the front door of every school in the district because, again, that is an option if option A is, or option one is unavailable.
So we don't need to use the word or--
So we can say if any of the, let me, let me go up and I'll write the language right now. So when we go up to, okay. Notice of emergency meetings shall be provided in a manner that is fair under the circumstances and necessary to protect the public interest. The board shall attempt to provide immediate public notice of all the emergency meetings as follows. Publishing a notice in a newspaper of daily general circulation in the county if available. And then I would keep the period there and say if unavailable. Sorry?
There's another section, one that's not there.
I'm sorry, okay. Skipping forward, let me, let me look at the--
Yeah, if that is available, then those options would apply. If the newspaper isn't available, then option two.
No, yeah, yeah, we're, but we're not choosing option two. We're creating essentially a hybrid of option one and option two. So if unavailable, we've--
Do we have to say determined by?
I would not.
Like, who deems it available or unavailable? Does it matter?
I would not spell that out.
Okay, and you're comfortable with that?
A number of options-- A number of options which would indicate whether that's available or not.
Okay.
So if it is unavailable to us, then...
The board will make an attempt?
The board will attempt. The board shall attempt to provide notice via any of the following means, comma, as applicable. Colon.
Go, it turns.
L, L inapplicable. And then we would have, we would retain making announcement over at least one radio station whose signal, signal is generally deceived in the county, a reasonable number of times daily during the 48 hours immediately preceding the date of such meeting. Providing a news release to other print and broadcast media outlets serving all or part of the county. I'd get rid of the word and prior to providing.
Yeah, that's what I was, I, I would prefer having either an or, or just... I want to make sure that we're not locking ourselves into ensuring we're doing all of them.
Posting a notice on the district's website, not of. Get rid of the F after on. Okay, I can't tell it struck. Do we have district-approved social, social media platforms?
We do.
Okay. Then I would combine those two and say posting a notice on the district's website, comma.
And of social media platforms.
District-approved social media platforms.
Those are free. Anything we have that's free, that's already our communication tools.
And do we want to initiate that with an and or an or? Because I, I think we always would want to put it on the district website, but there may be situations in which we don't wish to put it on social media platforms. Or, not that we don't wish to, but it may be that, for instance...
Social media platforms aren't available any longer?
Well, I, I mean that our, our board clerk may not routinely do so, which is what I just heard.
Well, it, it begs the question on some of these things, this is a function, these, the rest of these functions other than the notice that the board clerk does to the Star Banner or to whatever newspaper, all of the rest of these are not functions that the board clerk currently uses. So this would have to be in conjunction with the Public Relations, Public Information Office.
Okay, then let me do this. Delete that and there. And next line, posting on the district-approved social media platforms, get rid of as well as. Posting a notice on the district-approved, on, get rid of the district-approved, but just district-approved. Social media platforms. Posting a notice on the front door of the district's main office, which is located at. I would retain, because we're saying each of these is an option, front door of the schools was, and I'll seek the superintendent's guidance as to whether to, she'd prefer to leave that off or leave it on. If they are treated as, if they're treated as, I, I can't really imagine a situation in which we would, we would, in, in the event of a serious emergency, it's doubtful that we would be able to post it on every school in the district. So perhaps that is better left alone and left off altogether.
I would agree with that.
Okay, then let's do that.
We discussed some of our fencing arrangements now may actually prevent you from getting to the front door.
Sure, yeah. And posting a notice on a gate is going to be, have its own vagaries and problems, so.
Is there another location other than the county courthouse door? Because it does...
Well, we've said the county, the district's main office.
Right, but the line immediately under the county courthouse door says, and on the front door, and you can put other prominent location in the county. I'm just curious if there is, if we would agree that there might be another prominent location as opposed to...
Well, for public notice, the county courthouse would probably be it. There are other places where people tend to go more frequently, but there aren't multiples. But City Hall would be...
City government and...
What city?
The task club, task club.
Right, Mary McPherson governmental complex, I, I don't know.
How about we say this? Posting a notice on the county courthouse door or other available governmental...
Government locations.
Government office locations?
Sure. I thi, I think that gives us at least, because I mean, who, you can't even get to the county courthouse door, can you? I mean, you have to go through the parking garage and you can't, you can't get...
No, you can't?
No, you can't. You have to go through the parking garage and then through the metal, I mean, I...
There's no door, you're outside the door.
There's that one door on the side, but...
Well, the main entrance by the glass and everything is, is right there on... Yeah, it's, it's, it's...
Anyway, I think that covers it. Yeah, that covers it.
Okay. Terry, can we make a note to review that for coherence to make sure that I didn't leave any words in later? Okay, so then moving on to our next, and that, that would conclude that particular policy.
Yes, to go back and do the other one.
And we'll need to delete 2, Option 2.
Right.
Okay.
I have a question going back if...
And we have to go back to the other one with the meetings, correct? That was attached to this one we just talked about prior to the break.
And in the general meetings, notice of meetings is, as, that's page 62?
Right.
164.
So I have two quick questions on policies prior to, or bylaws prior to this one.
So this at the bottom, if you notice, I think I can save some time here. Notice of special meetings shall be made in a newspaper, a newspaper's general circulation, sufficiently advanced in the meeting to allow the public to attend. Tells what needs to be in there, but it should direct us to, this is, this directs us to... See also bylaw 0165.1 agendas and 016.5, 0165.3 Special and Emergency Meetings.
Okay.
So I don't think there are alterations that need to be done here, unless you see otherwise.
No. Let's go backward to Vice Chair Campbell.
Page 56, this is policy number 0154. I'm not certain either that this policy is named correctly or that it is needed. Policy 0154, page 56. The policy is titled motions, but the, the bylaw reads, "The school board shall at the organizational meeting designate a day, place, and time for regular and special meetings." So that doesn't have anything to do with motions. But there's a separate one on meetings, which is on page 63, but i, is there need for this specific bylaw when we've just designated in our organizational meeting bylaw, didn't we? Isn't this a part of the organizational meeting bylaw? That we're also doing the daytime and...
It could be, you could put that sentence in the other bylaw about the organizational meeting if you want.
Yeah, I think that's a better place for it because it certainly isn't a motion. So that's on page 53, Policy 0151. So if we just added this sentence to the organizational meeting bylaw, we would eliminate this one.
All right, because the operative phrase that we do need to have there is that on that part of the organizational meeting is that we do need to designate our meeting dates and times. And so I would agree that it is best all placed under that organizational meeting, so we know...
It's already sort of in there. It says including the schedule for regular meetings and names, regular meetings.
So we probably can just strike this altogether then?
This whole policy.
Before we strike, let me, let me review to make sure.
What's your next one, Ms. Campbell?
Okay, but that differs from the, we do need to designate a day, place, and time for regular and special meetings. Now this says, in this policy, including the schedule for regular meetings, okay? But in our policy that we're about to delete says that at that organizational meeting, we shall designate a day, place, and time for regular and special meetings, okay?
Oh, add that sentence.
So let's...
Can you combine all that into that one?
Yeah.
Yes, let's combine that.
Add that sentence there.
And then delete.
So after including the schedule, let's see, "The chair and superintendent shall sign a copy of proceedings of organization." Now that, that's indicating the super chair and superintendent shall sign a copy of the proceedings.
Designate, so, sentence would go ahead of that.
So this, yes, sentence would need to go ahead of that. After the word, the date of their organizational meeting, so we set the public notice required by law, and set, so the public notice required by law can be provided, period, then I would insert at the organizational meeting. You can cut and paste if you want, but at the organizational meeting. The board shall designate a day, place, and time. There you go.
Say board, not school board.
Yep. Well, don't get rid of board there, just...
There you go.
The board.
Yep.
Shall.
Yep.
At the organizational meeting.
Oh, we have to remove organizational.
Oh, yeah, okay. Capitalize the board.
Yeah.
The board shall at the organizational meeting designate a day, place, and time for regular and special meetings, period. Done?
Yep.
All right.
Next question is on page 61. This again is just a kind of a cleanup thing, Policy 0163. I believe in every other reference, the, the chairman is now referred to as the chair. And I think this is the only bylaw that refers to the chairman and vice chairman, but I think they're all referenced as chair now. So it's 0163, page 61.
It should be chair and vice chair.
I think you're correct.
Okay.
Chair instead of chairman.
Yeah, it's, it's, I think three times in there. The chair and then the vice chair and... Just for consistency's sake.
Where you at though?
Still cleaning that one up? Yep? And that one. I, I'm just curious, the, the next two questions I had are kind of, again, where the title of the bylaw doesn't seem to align with what the bylaw is about. Page 72 and then page 73 also, I'm, so the first one is executive session, but then it references exempt meetings. So I'm just, is, do executive sessions need to now be called exempt meetings or? Page 72, this is policy or 0166?
I think the title is supposed to be exempt meetings.
Exempt meetings, so we don't call them executive sessions any longer?
Well, we, we do.
Okay, so then that's my question, because the, the title is executive session, but then the actual bylaw says exempt meetings. So why are those two not the same?
Yeah, Neola's, Neola's update was to take off exempt sessions and call it execu, I'm sorry, executive sessions and call it exempt meetings. Because exempt sessions can have, I'm sorry, executive sessions can have multiple meanings. So it's essentially, this is identifying that what we mean by an executive session is not necessarily, for instance, the superintendent has her executive cabinet meetings, but instead these are shade meetings. So...
So the title needs to...
We can call them exempt meetings, but we probably need to, in the general parlance of us discussing things, start making sure that we're not calling them executive sessions when we're talking about doing a, a union meeting or shade meeting or, you know, school safety meeting, something like that, so.
So we should call it, the title should then be exempt meetings. Perfect.
Yes.
And then the same thing for the second, the next page, it's work session versus workshops.
Yes.
Should be workshops.
So they're all calling workshops now is what?
No, I, that's up to you. I think we should retain, it's, it's become, we, we call them work sessions. That's what we always have.
Right.
And it doesn't really make a difference what you call them, but I think we need to call things by one name, so.
Yeah.
So what do we want to call it?
I'm fine with work session.
Me too. Workshop reminds me of Santa and while I love Santa.
Get our little hammer out.
They're a little different. And we may say at a work session that we want to workshop this further.
True.
We're just double checking statute right now under 1001 to make sure that there's not, there's not dueling language there, but I, I think that's...
I just have three more choices. We're going to be...
It's in the, it's in the, it's in chapter 120.
Says workshop in the statute.
You can use work session if you want.
So let's stay with work session.
I would stay with work session, okay, we'll, we'll, we'll keep.
And clean up, because it's in the paragraph too, so if y'all want to fix that later, that's fine. Work session, yeah.
Where you at?
More location.
Sure. The next one I had was on page 76. This is bylaw 0168, and it's just a point of clarification if in fact this is currently what our bylaw states, because I'm not completely certain that this is how we're handling this right now. Policy 0168, the second paragraph, "The minutes of board meetings shall be considered at the next regular meeting." And I don't believe that's our timeline we're using right now, so I'm not certain if that's the timeline we need to be using, but that's not currently the timeline we're following right now. Page 76, Policy 0168, it's the second paragraph, first sentence.
We can either hold ourselves to the standard of at the next meeting, or we can change the language to say at a subsequent meeting of the board. So that we get still the same...
Subsequent, I would say.
You know.
Should be subsequent.
I mean, I just, I noticed this and I'm like, we're definitely not...
We're not at the very next meeting, so it'd be subsequent.
So shall, so in that case, I would just alter that to say at a subsequent regular meeting.
Is there a reason that Neol, I mean, I'm, this is a Neola policy, is there a reason that Neola recommends that it's at the next regular meeting?
No, silent, statute is silent about it, so just, I guess that's a Robert's rules.
Robert's rules are boring. Yeah, that's a problematic procedure thing.
Okay.
That the minutes would have been read and I'm like...
I just wanted to make sure we didn't have it in our bylaw if we're not following it.
I agree.
I got two more tabs, y'all. And they're both about when we review policy, because that's the last couple here.
Where you, where you at?
Sure, go ahead.
Where you go there? Page 77, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
77.
77.
Currently, this is not how we, where it talks about board participation. And we give time limit to the public. Number 2, where it says, "The time period may be extended or reduced by the presiding officer." That gives that presiding officer sole power. That's not how we do it. Are you looking at it, number 2?
A2.
I think. Do we want to keep that, or do we want to keep it the way we're doing it? Where we all make a decision about what we want to...
By the majority of the board?
Right.
Yeah.
Because that's what we're doing anyway.
Correct.
I don't think I would say consensus, but I would say by, by the majority of the board.
Yes, who I'm talking about?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Because that would just leave it solely upon the Chair-
Right, good point.
-to shut it down.
And there definitely are instances where we offer extended time.
Correct.
In addition to reduced time. Yeah? No, that's great. Um, yeah, the last two are side by side, page 80 and 81, and again, it's just the use of the word periodically, because this is policy 0171.1 and 0171.2. This is all that review of policy, like, over and over, I mean, all of these, the, the last few that say review of policy, they all say that we'll periodically review policy on ethics, periodically review policy on community relations, on philosophy of education. I just, I'm not a huge fan of the word periodically, so I don't know how we, I, I think we've, I'm not certain that we need all of these, now that we've just said that we're going to do a glance or a review at our organizational meeting. Is there a reason that we need to have each one of these broken out, telling us when we're going to review?
I agree, Vice Chair Campbell, and, and I think the way around that would be to simply use a statement that we've already created-
Yes.
-for our organizational meeting, and, and either insert it in each one of these, if it's still even necessary to separate them out like that, or just have it be one that says "review of policy" with our statement.
That would be 80, 81, 82-
And 83.
83.
Yeah.
And Neola is advising that we, we can delete those.
Okay.
Perfect.
Clean it up.
Love removing pages.
Um, I, I need to readdress on page 72, the executive session language.
Okay.
Because one of the alterations in reviewing this is that, uh, the exempt meetings is, it appears, under this definition, contains two classes of things. One is attorney-client privileged, or shade meetings, true shade meetings, attorney-client privilege meetings. The other would be what it still lists as being executive sessions, which are, in the second paragraph, it identifies executive sessions, meetings between the Superintendent, Superintendent's representatives and the Board. Those would be, for example, union negotiation meetings, or, say, schools department meetings. However, um, the way that they are set out within this policy, um, there is a section in the middle that really is only supposed to apply to attorney-client meetings, and that is about, "The entire session shall be recorded by a certified court reporter, et cetera," um, for attorney-client sessions. So, I want to ensure that it doesn't become, I mean, that's, that's a requirement that I have from legal, but that's not a requirement that, that the Superintendent would have for an executive or shade session, because those are not required to be, um, those are not required to be, um, transcribed. So, with your permission, I will simply reorder the sentences to ensure that that is fixed, so that it doesn't put the burden on, or it doesn't indicate that the district is supposed to be transcribing things that we aren't required by law to transcribe.
Right.
And that's probably a matter of just moving some sentences down some. So, I'll do that and not waste your time further here, if we can do that.
I'm happy.
Perfect.
All right.
I didn't have anything else, I don't know if you guys did.
Is this the template, it look like that? It's sloppy. I need to fix that.
That's it for me.
Okay, let's see.
Y'all had something else.
Do we have something on agendas? Anything we need to bring up?
Oh, the agenda one.
Uh, each of the items on your table of contents, which has red items, uh, those are ones that Neola has provided an update to. There's nothing further that you have to do as far as selecting options, however, those are ones that since prior review by Marion County School Board has been updated in some manner. So, if anything stood out to any of you that you wish to look at those updates, or, or ask questions, or call attention to, we can do so. Otherwise, we can stop now, and I'll assume that you've done so, or we can go through them one by one, would be the pleasure of the Board.
I'll say that I've reviewed all of the ones in red, and I'm fine with them.
And do we need to-
I read through them. Any changes I thought were necessary, I brought up, so.
We addressed the travel and per diem.
Right.
And a couple of others, too, I think.
All righty, and page 64 to 65, agendas, 0165.01, just because this is one that impacts us a fair amount, um, these are ones that had some updates as well, so I just wanted to call your attention to it, if, if you want to lay eyes on it, and see if there's anything that anyone wishes to ask questions about, or alter as to this one specific policy. Otherwise, we're, there's nothing else that I, I see that I need to draw to your attention?
I see workshops, we need to change it to session.
Yes. So, wherever, we'll do a global search, and wherever workshop appears, we'll, we'll go back to work session.
Yes, sir, we're across.
Good catch. And in the worst-case scenario, it may be one of those things that, you know, we find this, we, we find ourselves picking the word workshop out on a few future, but it, it won't have any content-based meaning, this is going to make a big deal, but it'll be an annoyance for us, I'm sure.
I don't see a workshop, do you?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it's-
And when I think of all the cleaning up we've been doing, we're definitely doing a lot more work than just workshop, work session, so I'm, I'm fine if we have a couple of minor things that we've missed along the way that we had figured, figure out in November.
Hit Ctrl F.
You did that.
Do it again, please. Type in work. Okay, and there you go, three of three. See, work session is there, okay, so that's good.
Maybe it changed.
Click the down arrow to go to the next, or, or see where work occurs again. It says there's three of three, so I just want to-
So, we need to change it earlier, or may, they've changed all of them then, on that? And so, this is just the old-
Click the down arrow next to work. There we go, yep. And it's not, that's one of three, okay, good. Click it again, please. I don't know why it's saying it appears three times, but that's, maybe it's, maybe because it's already been struck.
One is on the title bar.
Ah, I see.
It's not so visible right now.
I see. Okay.
Give me, do, do me a favor, um, and this is, this is, I just need clarity on, on page 64. The, um, F, there it is, I seen, just make, clear it up for me, that last sentence, this, "The agenda for special meetings called by the Superintendent, or by the Superintendent request that the Board Chairman, or on the request-"
Chair.
Right. "Or on the request of the majority of the Board members must be prepared upon the calling of the meeting, but not less than 48 hours prior to such a meeting, the agenda for special meetings, along with any meeting materials available." Just clear up all that for me, clarify all that for me, I'm trying, because I'm kind of getting lost in the language.
Okay, this is on a consent agenda. "The agenda for special meetings called by the Superintendent," uh, this is special meetings, not our general meetings.
Mm-hmm.
"Or called by the Superintendent at the request of the Board Chair, or by a majority of the Board members, must be prepared upon the calling of the meeting, but not less than 48 hours prior to such a meeting." So, if we call a special meeting, there needs to be an agenda item that is listed for that meeting, um, 48 hours in advance. Normally, we have in the past done it, so that there's a, you know, it's, that the agenda is available seven days in advance, um, however, in the event of a special meeting, it would be 48 hours in advance. "The agenda for special meetings," this is added, added language there, "Agenda for special meetings, along with any meeting materials available in electronic form, excluding confidential or exempt information, must be published on the Board's website at least 24 hours before special meeting. It must indicate any recommendations of the Superintendent, so, or must include any recommendation of Superintendent." So, this would be the agenda for special meetings. Agenda has to be created essentially at the time where you're creating the new meeting, um, however, then any documents that are supporting documents would need to be uploaded within 24 hours in advance of the meeting.
Are those the right timeframes? Elena? Those are the right timeframes? Okay.
Does that answer the question I, I know-
I was concerned about the timeframes. If those are the right ones, that's good, we're good.
Chair, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
While we're on this, if I may call your attention to B, page ran 64, correct?
Yes.
Um, if you look at the language in the second sentence of B, it says, "Generally, the agenda should be provided no later than seven days prior to the meeting," or "provided as to provide," sounds awkward, could we say perhaps "as to allow"?
Yeah.
As provide, or provided so as to allow time for the study of the agenda by the member?
Yeah.
Just a language suggestion, perhaps.
Can you make that alteration? Yes, ma'am.
Wow, and change-
No, to a-
Last provide, change it to allow.
Right, so it's not provided to provide.
Or provided so as to.
And maintain the word proper, Superintendent?
Yes, thank you.
In your own caps, there we go. All right? All right, um, I will give us our, as they teach in, in, in teachers' school, giving appropriate wait time there for each of you to raise any additional concern that you may wish with any of the policies, or any discussion that we wish to have on anything else, and then I'll ask if anyone has any additional thing that they would like to review, discuss, or edit as to our bylaws.
Chair, I have a few, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Chair Cummings, members of the Board, I have a few items that I would like to see clarification on. Uh, start with page 24, policy 0131. Middle of the page, under notices, C, follows, "All notices pertaining to policymaking shall be published by mail to persons who have requested advanced notice and to organizations representing persons affected by the policy." Is that the Board's intent to provide those by mail to those who've requested advanced notice?
Statutory, isn't that statutory?
Yeah, I think, I'll double-check it now, but I believe that is statutory, specifically with rulemaking and development.
Yep.
I think we are required, if someone requests by mail, um, so I will, I will look that up right now.
But to be sure that we're clear with that intent, and that that's statute-driven, then we will make sure to provide that.
Seems a little laborious to me.
Tom, do you know the statutory source on that particular one?
120 point-
Okay, 50.
Earlier than 120. It has notices.
Well, let me ask this, so that I don't hold everyone's time here. If, if there is indeed a statutory requirement that we provide by mail, I think there is, if there is indeed a statutory requirement that for rulemaking specifically, not just general agenda stuff, but for rulemaking that we provide to mail, by mail, to persons who request an advanced notice, and organizations representing persons affected by the policy, then I will retain this. And if it is not specifically statutory that it required, I can, I mean, I, I'm not a fan of superfluous stuff in there, so we can get rid of it, and if that's the Board's pleasure.
I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we'll make a note, and I'll, we're checking right now, but it may take me five minutes or more to, to get to where we need to be, so-
Certainly. And likewise, there's another that follows. Similarly, on page 62, it is policy 0164, under notice of meetings, C also indicates that, and it does say here pursuant to state law-
Page 162, page-
Page 62.
62, okay.
C, by mail to persons who have made requests, so if we could just clarify that that is statute-driven, if that's, and if so, obviously, we would leave it otherwise. I just want to make sure that we're-
That's also in one.
Clear.
Okay, we need to find where in 120, so that I can cite that directly.
Thank you.
Okay, um, 120.54, section 3, sub A, sub 3, indicates, um, "Notice shall be mailed to all persons named in the proposed rule and to all persons who, at least 14 days prior to such mailing, have made requests of the agency for advanced notice of its proceedings. The agency shall also give," agency being us in this case, "shall also give such notice as is prescribed by rule to those particular classes of person to whom the intended action is directed."
It's in the model rule, probably.
So, so, yes, that, that's-
You should cite that.
And that's under adoption procedures, rulemaking, section 54, parentheses 3. Parenthesis 2 is all about rule development, workshops, and negotiated rulemaking, and then, as to, section 3, adoption procedures, that's where it indicates the language that was just expressed there. And, you know, I, I, looking at it here, I mean, our, our general public notice provisions are sufficient, with the exception of where someone has specifically requested by mail within 14 days in advance, or, um, where there is a specific, um, let's see here. Someone's made a specific request for advanced notice of the proceedings. All persons. As well as persons who are named in the proposed rule, which may or may not include anyone, there may be, if we, if there aren't persons named in the, in the rule, then we don't have to do anything there, um, or if someone has made a specific request. So, I would be hesitant to remove that language there, though I'm open to discussion of whether it might need to be modified, but I think it's, pretty much tracks the statute.
Okay. Just want a clarification, thank you. I have one, one other item. Uh, page 73, policy is- Page seventy-three, policy is zero-one-six-six-point-one. In A, in my copy, it shows, or the superintendent order designee, is it the board's intent to include designee? In many other places, we've just taken it out, and just superintendent is designee, but it was in green, so I know it was added.
Uh...
A, the superintendent order designee.
I thought it was supposed to take it out.
Yeah, I, I, I do not think this is one where we specifically needed or decided to place designee, so it was, um...
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think that it, that, that's one where superintendent implies designee.
That was what I would suspect.
Just one of those multiple, multiple catches.
That's fine. And if I may, in that same sentence, if you continue, shall take minutes of all matters discussed during work sessions to be read and approved. So, with the language saying read and approved, I just want to be sure it is the board's desire to have read and approved.
Well...
For our clarification.
And it says at next meeting.
We need to get rid, we need to change, alter that, too, at the neck, at, at a subsequent regular or special.
But we also don't read our minutes.
But we also said read.
That's covered in the minutes by law, I, I just have to find it.
Right, so just, thank you.
You don't have to read them, I don't think you do, do you?
So, we're eliminating to be read, and we are adding...
Subsequent meetings.
At a subsequent regular or special meeting, instead of next, the next.
Well, you know, the same thing on our minutes, I thought, well, the way it's worded on the minutes one, which is the policy on page seventy-six, says minutes shall be considered where they shall be read unless waived by law. And is that how, I mean...
Well, the, the minutes are not, the minutes are placed on, into the record...
Right.
But they are not read into the record.
So, is that how this also should be worded, where it says, discussed, to be read unless waived by law? That's how we have it written in the minutes by law. I didn't catch it on this one, good catch, don't go it, but that's the way it's worded on the other one, on page seventy-six, by law, zero-one-six-eight, where we approved the change of the minutes of the board meeting being considered at the next regular meeting, and we changed that to subsequent, but it says where they shall be read unless waived by law, corrected and approved. So, I just was assuming that our minutes being read into the record is approved by law, that we don't have to do that.
Well, for example, there's some specific meetings to which the meetings, the, the minutes would specifically wa, be waived by law and not read in case we had any idea of doing so. For example, executive session, or something like that. So, that, in that case, it's waived by law, so if we had the language shall be read in here, it'd be very critical that we said, but not in cases where it's confidential or exempt, something like that.
Right.
I do not know of a specific requirement that indicates that minutes must be read, they are provided in, in the record, but I don't know of anything specifically indicates that they must be read into the record or anything like that. I think that's, that's just something, an artifact of the way the policy was developed, but, Mr. Whitmer, I'll defer, if you have any other...
Could you say, shall be presented and approved at a subsequent meeting? I don't, they're, they're available, they've become public, they're on the website.
I, I like what you just said, to be presented and approved, I mean, because we do present them.
Right.
So, rather than read and approved, indicating presented and approved.
Presented is way more accurate.
Yes. So, both of those policies then need to be adjusted.
Presented and approved, instead of to be read.
Right, because they're presented.
Right.
Okay, and that, the last policy as well, has the same language. Which, which one, that was, superintendent, do you recall what we...
It was called minutes.
Yes, it is zero-one-six-six-point-one, page seventy-three.
Presented and approved, yep.
Letter A.
And the other one is zero-one-six-eight.
There we go.
Yeah, so...
You just had, yep.
So, where you've changed at a subsequent...
Where they shall be read, just, uh...
At a subsequent...
Presented, instead of read.
Yes, there we go.
You can leave, you can leave the unless waived by law, I mean, there's something, we're not presenting minutes of, of executive sessions, for example.
Also correct, chair. It should say chair, instead of chairman.
I know, if you can just do a clean over on that, anytime it says chairman, just change it to chair. I've seen it in a couple of other ones since I, I caught it in the one main one talking about the chairman, but I didn't get to it.
Now, it's standing out.
Yeah, it is.
Presented, instead of read. And delete chairman, or eliminate M-A-N from chair. The end of that sentence. Yes, and we'll, we'll want to do a, we'll want to do a search of all of them, all instances of chair, chairman. Okay, and I've just confirmed with Neola, they all clean and go through and find all instances of chairman and modify them.
Thank you.
Superintendent, I, you had those couple of concerns, any other items you wish to bring up?
No, no additional items, thank you.
All right. Board members, any additional items to discuss?
Just are we getting tomorrow's notebooks today?
Yes.
I thought that's what those were.
Ms. Martinez, do you have anything?
I will have one of these for each board member, right after the meeting. These are the work session materials for the polled for review items as well. I will, I would say that for tomorrow, we would likely have a day a bit like today, in which case we'd be done near this time, but of course, it's very difficult to plan those things exactly, because it depends on what areas we have more discussion to go into, and I don't want to artificially limit your time. So, we, will be, will be presenting these tomorrow, and we'll see how, how far we get. Hopefully, we'll be concluded. Now, we do have one already, I will note, that is listed in here. As you read this, you will see the policy on drug-free workplace. I've just received a request that that policy be pulled for now. So, that one, you won't have to review for these purposes, we'll review that when we do our next policy update. And as to, is that, okay, as, and let me go ahead and give these to you now, actually, Terry, would you mind passing these out to them while, so I can keep by the microphone So, I'm, I'm giving you time off on two of these here. You'll see the page numbers on the second page of your, of your blue folder. These are the policies that are polled for further review, this is what we have to go over tomorrow. Except, two of these were, were knocking off. One is the drug-free workplace policy, two-eleven, that's been requested to be polled. And then, the twenty-two, page twenty-two, twenty-three, religious patriotic ceremonies and observances, that's one that I specifically, we had polled for review. I added some, added and, made some additions and deletions that still require some further review prior to adoption as a policy. So, I also intended to submit that as our next, at our next update and review. So, those two items, we will not need to discuss tomorrow. If we have additional time, tomorrow at the end, I will bring up a couple of items regarding policy eighty-eight-hundred, just for board's informational purposes, but it's not something that we have to, we have to craft all of the edits for tomorrow, because I believe that may be something that requires its own session in the future.
Policy eighty-eight-hundred, what else, what was the other one?
Thirty-one-tw四. Thirty-one-tw四, don't study up on, because you won't need it right now. And eighty-eight-hundred, you can review, but it's not one which we will finalize tomorrow.
Gotcha.
All right, so four policies is what you will be working on tomorrow.
Question, are there any policies that we need to review due to any current changes in legislation right now, come out of Tallahassee?
That'll be in the next update session. One of the things that we've discussed all the way along here is that we have to get a core set of policies, and we now have probably ninety-five percent there, and any that are subject to the updates that Neola has gotten prepared and drafted, will be our first update session. That'll probably be sooner than is typical for updates, probably within about three months of adoption of these, so...
Okay.
So, late summer.
Very likely, yes. All right.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Whitmer, did you have any other additions, or anything like that?
No, I know the next Neola update is scheduled for July.
Okay, there we go. Chair, the, the meeting, is that your discretion now, as to where we go?
Board member McKean, you have anything, ma'am?
I do not, thank you.
Board member Thor.
Thank you.
Board member Brownie.
I may have a hard stop tomorrow around eleven o'clock, but I'll, I'll know, I'll know between now and then.
I shake him.
Good.
So, we're checking that.
No, thank you, sir.
I'm good. Meeting is adjourned at eleven-thirty-nine. Thank you.